All right, everybody, let's go. Should the council retire when we're out here? All those offenders, I... All those opposed to... Trees are... All right, you're excused. Okay. Let's go into order. About to cast this in council, we will say...
Vice Chair, Mr. Vice Mayor, Mayor, Chairman, here's your... Your board. Vice Chair, sir, 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 yeah. Second. Vice Chair, sir, all right. Mr. Chair. All to order, we have the Capitol Hill, the Capitol office. We'll call for the House of Representatives. Nancy Pelosi. Harvey Mann. Vice Chair. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He's excused.
Good. The invocation tonight is with Father Leo de Chant from Blessed... How do you say it?
Hunipero.
Say it again. Say it up at the mic. Huni... Hunipo. Sarah Parrish. That's over there on the west side, right?
Quartz Hill. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Almighty ever-living God, in whose hand lies every human heart and the rights of peoples, look with favor, we pray, on those who govern with authority over us, that throughout the whole world, the prosperity of peoples, the assurance of peace and freedom of religion, may through your gift be made secure, through our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit.
Mr. Smith, why don't you give your flag? You place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Skateboarding. Okay. Let's move the skateboarding to the front. Do you want to do it that way? I mean, it might be the last night to get to skateboarding. Sorry, man.
Okay. Tonight, we're going to honor three people. Three people who, I think, got the... How do you say shafted in a nice way? I guess there's really not a nice way to say it. These three individuals protected our community in ways that were truly needed, innovative, and were creative in the sense that they really targeted people that were that very small percentage of that Section Eight program that were committing Section Eight fraud. And as a result of them doing that, we saw our crime rate just plummet. It just dropped like a stone. And when we looked at the statistics, we could see that as the Section Eight fraud investigations dropped off, because the complaints had dropped off, it tracked our crime rate, dropping the same way. It had a truly phenomenal effect, because what we found is that people who commit a crime over here, which Section Eight fraud was, also have a tendency to commit crimes over here. And when you're able to get those people out of the community, and in this case, all they had to do was move, we saw the whole community prosper. As a result of doing a marvelous job, they also created political pressure. And I gotta say, I didn't help matters by calling attention to the problem in the first place. And we had this T-Cow group come along and cause a big ruckus and file lawsuits and got the Board of Supervisors, who had the courage of a snail, all except Mike Antonovich, who supported you from the beginning to the end. Those other four supervisors had, I mean, the total abandonment of this community, a total abandonment of integrity, and a total abandonment of any semblance of courage. And they yielded to nothing but a short, tumultuous political storm that passed in the night. I mean, now, where is it? Who cares? The only people left caring are the three men who should have been getting raises and promotions and honors, instead got terminated. From the city of Lancaster, why don't you guys come up? Gary Brody, John O'Neill, and Alan Mullins. I think I speak on behalf of ninety-nine percent of this city, that we are indebted to you. We, from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for what you did for us, and also for the burden you had to bear. That was totally unfair, totally undeserved. And we want you to know that you have found a place in our hearts, and if ever anybody writes a book about profiles and courage, you guys should be in it. Because you stood up, you did what was necessary, and it was, damn the torpedoes. And then we discovered, there's a reason they call them torpedoes. Sometimes they sink ships. And you guys happen to have been on that ship, for which I am terribly sorry, that I could not prevent what happened to you happening. And so, on behalf of the city of Lancaster, I did want to acknowledge that, at least in our hearts, you're heroes. And we know who you are, and we know what you did. And someday, maybe, the rest of Los Angeles County will know. Gary, who's Gary? Okay. Three of Lancaster's heroes. All right, I'm going to skip over the consent calendar, and I'll read that part later. Let's go right to the... We'll skip over the Housing Authority. The Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Where's the skateboard thing?
New Business One.
Okay. Moving to New Business Item One. I take it we have some speaker cards? Thank you. And... Do we have a report?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. At your request, we have drafted an ordinance that would establish a no-skateboard, no-skeet zone within the city of Lancaster, the boundaries of that zone to be established by a separate resolution to be adopted. The obvious purpose of this ordinance is to deal with the safety hazards created by the use of either roller skates or skateboards or similar devices in an area that is designed primarily for pedestrian traffic, and an area where we want to encourage pedestrian traffic. And so, based on the number of complaints that we've had and the like, we have drafted this ordinance, and it's before you tonight. It will require two actions: one, to introduce the ordinance, and then the second action to adopt the resolution that establishes the area within the downtown area. If there are other areas within the community that you wish to designate as no-skateboard areas, certainly, we can prepare another resolution and bring that back at a future time, once we've identified those particular areas. But the primary area now is the downtown area. Still leaves open American Heroes Park. It leaves a number of places available for skateboarding within the community. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer those.
From American Heroes Park to the Boulevard, do we have a street that we've left open?
Not for skating, no. You'd have to walk from that area, if you were coming from the Boulevard, to American Heroes Park. The boundaries are Sierra to Tenth, to the west and east, and essentially Kettering on the north side, and Milling on the south side.
I would like to see one of those side streets left open, and that we can, you know, close administratively at a...
Fern's open.
Whatever flexibility we can add into it. Can we do that?
If you would modify the res... If that's the wish of you and the council, obviously, modify the resolution when you make a motion.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Sharon Murray?
Hi. I'm Sharon Murray, and my son is on the cover of this magazine, of this paper. He works for the pharmacy. He's been skateboarding ever since he was ten years old. He's a good kid. I know everybody at the skateboard shops. The whole thing is, is I do not understand why people complain. You know, I just, I don't, I don't understand that. They skateboard, and I always tell them, when we all get together, I'm all for it, twenty... I'm all for it. I tell him not, you know, step aside, because people are coming, and that. I don't understand. The whole point is, if you think there's no... Let me think. They're going to skateboard, and if they don't skateboard, they're going to do other things. And those things probably aren't going to be good things. So, the whole point is, all the kids that skateboard, they're good people. They will treat you good. I mean it. They will, they're good kids. And it's just unbelievable. I don't understand. And the whole point is, you're not going to have a skate park up here? I don't understand that either. There's two in Palmdale. There's none up here. I don't get it. I've signed papers, you know... Yeah, thank you. I've signed petitions. I had a stroke, I'm sorry. I signed petitions. I did all that. And there's still not one up here. The kids that can't get around, how are they going to get any place? They, you know, maybe they don't have any money. See, I always took my son, and me and another mother, we always did that. But, you know, kids that go, oh, I can't go here, but if they can, they can skateboard. That's all I'm saying. I just think it's unbelievable that, you know, they're... You guys are kind of cutting it down on Lancaster Boulevard, on Kettering, all those streets. I do not understand that. I just don't. Thank you.
Thank you. John Techen?
Thank you, sir, and fellow council members. My name is John Techen. I'm with the County of Los Angeles Parks and Recreation. Now, your fears are not unheard.
Right.
Right now, the county is in the process of doing a feasibility study to install a skate park in Quartz Hill. I met with Nate from Pharmacy Board Shop today, and as a fellow skateboarder and a parent, you're not going to like what I have to say, but I do agree with the ordinance, only for the simple fact is that I've been walking on Boulevard with my child when a skateboarder's came and knocked over my child. Now, as a skateboarder, though, I get upset, because that's not the way everybody is.
Excuse me, sir. You really have to talk to us.
I'm sorry. That's not the way everybody is. But if we... I agree that we take away the sidewalks, but I don't know the ordinances as far as what the bike path is allowed for. You've got a bike path running down Lancaster Boulevard. The bikes can go up and down. They cut in front of cars. They cut in front of traffic, just like skateboarders do. Why can't we allow the skateboarders to still use Lancaster Boulevard, but use the bike path to get to and from? My kids, we live on the west side of Lancaster Boulevard, yet they go to school on the east side. That's how my son got to school, was to skateboard, right down Lancaster Boulevard, every day to school. Now, by saying, no, you can't go down Lancaster Boulevard, he's got to go two or three blocks the other areas, into areas that are less populated, and crime could happen. I don't want my son riding his skateboard or walking down those streets because of the area around there. So, yes, I agree with the ordinance. However, I think we need to compromise and give them maybe the bike path to allow them to go up and down, or an area where they can move up and down the Boulevard without getting in the way of pedestrians or cars. It goes both ways. Bikes get in the way too, yet we let, allow bikes to ride up and down the Boulevard in the street. Why can't we do that with skateboards? Put an ordinance that, okay, if they're going to do that, they have to wear a helmet, just like bikes. They have to follow the same laws as bicycles if they're going to use the bike path. That way, they're still allowed to ride their skateboards from one end to the other, yet they're not getting in the way of the pedestrians that are on the sidewalk. So, I agree with this, but I think...
Isn't the bike path, oh, just the traffic lane?
I think there isn't there... I don't know if there's one delineated on the Boulevard, but I know after the Boulevard there is.
The mayor's asking me a question, can I answer?
I think the bike path, and let the city manager correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the bike path is also the traffic lane. Isn't that correct?
Yes, it's a shared traffic lane, cars and bikes.
And, you know, we have a fifteen mile an hour speed limit on the Boulevard. I don't know what skateboarders travel at, but certainly bikes are at fifteen miles an hour. The, you know, the viscerally, the objection I've had to the skateboarders is the lack of helmets, you know? Simply because of what I do, I see kids with brain damage all the time.
Well, we put an ordinance that makes them wear helmets on a bike. Why can't we do it on skateboards? I mean, they may not like it, but, you know, my son wears one, even though he doesn't like it.
We can certainly look into that, but the helmet law is a state law, not a local law.
Well, the helmet law for this, for the bicycles are...
Correct.
But am I, are we preempting to do one for skateboards?
The question is, do we have the authority to do that, or is there some preemption? Stay long, we'd have to look at that.
Let's find out.
Yeah, we'll...
Thank you for your time, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Nathan Morris?
Hi, Nathan Morris. District Manager of Local Business Pharmacy Board Shop, located in Lancaster for over a decade. My main point, or one of the main points I want to bring up is the perspective from the skateboarders. Transportation is a huge part of skateboarding. I fully understand the resentment towards the skateboarders who are destroying property. That is a huge negative aspect to the local businesses, but I don't think that that is the major problem here on the Boulevard. We're experiencing a lot of traffic of skateboarders that are just traveling to and from school, work, you know, the park, wherever they may go. These kids, they don't have cars or driver's licenses. Bikes can be a lot more expensive than skateboards. It's a fact that it's just a logical form of transportation for these kids. So, I just wanted to present that perspective. Also, the topic of a skate park is a very valid one. Skateboarding is not going to go away. If this ordinance passes, skateboarders are not going to go away. They're going to continue to do what they do. Skateboarders are used to being told no, and they'll still do what they love. A skate park gives them an opportunity to do what they love within the laws. If you guys don't want them loitering on the Boulevard, skating up and down the street, give them somewhere to go. There's countless park space that's not being used. If you've ever been to a skate park, it's usually pretty packed from open to close. Kids want to do what they love, like I stated. So, if you considered providing this, it's going to be a huge relief to those businesses that may have complaints or concerns. If you can tell them, hey, you can't do that here, but go here to do it, there's a much better chance of them doing it than you saying you can't do it at all. Because, you know, like I mentioned, these kids are going to continue to do what they love, which is to skateboard. And I'm twenty-eight years old, and I still skateboard, and to get a skate park would be huge even for me. So, yeah, that's it.
You know, I don't, I don't think we have... I haven't talked to the rest of the council, but I usually, we think along the same lines on a lot of things. I don't see where we would have a major issue of giving somebody the land to build a skate park, if it was a private enterprise that did it. I don't see this city, first of all, we don't have the money to do it anyway, but even if we did, I don't know that that is a function of city government that we would want to undertake. I mean, the attraction to skateboarding is the danger of it, especially in a skateboarding park. I mean, those kids are incredibly brave kids. I mean, I love to watch them. But from a mayor's perspective, and from a liability perspective on behalf of the city, I don't know that it's the most responsible thing for a city council to undertake. Might be, it's just what I'm seeing. But if that's something that there clearly may be a need for, then I would strongly suggest you get some type of private entity that come to talk to us about them operating one and building it. Because right now, I don't see the city building anything. Do you?
We have no plans for that, and I agree with that.
I mean, the state has totally eviscerated our budget. But to think that we're opposed to the concept, we're really not. Am I opposed to it from a fiscal, conservative perspective on behalf of the city? Yeah, I am. But you see the difference? I mean, I'd love to see one, that private enterprise was operating, and we could probably even figure out a way to give them park space to do it. But it's not something we're going to operate.
That would be a very interesting conversation I would love to have, as far as the space, because I actually have a group of local citizens, young and old, that we've been working towards the goal of having skate, a skate park, or multiple skate parks built in the area, for not only the benefit of the skateboarders, but the benefit of the city, for the reasons I stated, but...
I mean, we can make room for a pitching or a batting cage. We can sure as heck do that.
Yeah, yeah. There's thousands and thousands of square feet of unused park space that...
That is something we should talk about.
And on the topic of funding, that isn't something that has to fall hundred percent on the local government. There are plenty of opportunities out there between fundraising and different organizations, which we are, you know, exploring ourselves.
And if we're making the land available, it became a lot cheaper.
What's that?
If we're making the land available, it became a lot cheaper.
Yeah, of course. Yep.
All right. Let's keep the dialogue going. Okay. Tyler Edwards?
Hi, my name is Tyler Edwards. I work at Pharmacy Board Shop as an assistant manager.
I love your shirt.
Thank you. I've just found that skateboarding has been an opportunity for kids to, you know, not have to deal with, you know, getting harassed, more or less, but it has been part of it. Being on the Boulevard, it has been a subject, because it's, we are a shop there now. Regardless, there has been skateboarders there, but now I feel like that, you know, we are a shop there. It has been more directed because of that. And if there's many bicyclists and also been on the Boulevard, if there's bicycle, a bicycle shop at the Boulevard, there would also be problems directed towards them more, I feel like. So, like Nate had said, there's been talks about skateboard parks, and there has been no efforts but been towards that, you know, as long as skateboarders, not been directed towards, like, city members or anything like that. But if you give, you know, an option for kids, you know, to go to, rather than giving them no option to rebel, you know, you give someone to counteract an option, there would be more of an opportunity. I mean, you're going to spend thirty-five dollars, or twenty-five dollars on a ticket, that twenty-five dollars could be exempted towards a skate park. You know, you're fighting a battle that can't be won on both ends, I feel like.
Excuse me for interrupting, but, you know, the role that you all are taking here is to persuade us, right?
Yeah.
I can tell you that the one way to just make me stop thinking is to present it as this is something I have to do, or they're going to do something worse. That's, you know, that's not how I live my life. I hope that's not how you live your life. I mean, what we're trying to do is figure out a way that everybody can coexist.
True.
But if somebody wants to misbehave worse, because we don't see it your way, go ahead and misbehave. I mean, that's, that's why we have law enforcement. That just isn't a good, good technique, is all I'm saying. But I like the idea of the dialogue and figuring out a way that we can all coexist on this. And I think that that's possible, maybe by adjusting the times of the ordinance, maybe by adjusting the side streets of the ordinance. It, the idea of helmets, I think, is essential, so that's something we have to look at. But just so you know, you can give them more time if you need it. Do you need more time?
I mean, if there's an opportunity to get a skate park in here, I can say that that would probably be the end to the...
I think the bike path, and let the city manager correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the bike path is also the traffic lane. Isn't that correct?
Yes, it's a shared traffic lane, cars and bikes.
And you know, we have a 15 mile an hour speed limit on the Boulevard. I don't know what skateboarders travel at, but certainly bikes are at 15 miles an hour. The, you know, the viscerally, the objection I've had to the skateboarders is the lack of helmets. Simply because of what I do, I see kids with brain damage all the time.
Well, we put an ordinance that makes them wear helmets on a bike. Why can't we do it on skateboards? I mean, they may not like it, but you know, my son wears one even though he doesn't like it.
We can certainly look into that, but the helmet law is a state law, not a local law.
Well, the helmet law for this, for the bicycles are.
Correct.
But am I, are we preempting to do one for skateboards?
The question is, do we have the authority to do that, or is there some preemption? Stay long, we'd have to look at that.
Let's find out.
Yeah, we'll.
Thank you for your time, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Nathan Morris?
Hi, Nathan Morris. District manager of local business Pharmacy Board Shop, located in Lancaster for over a decade. My main point, or one of the main points I want to bring up is the perspective from the skateboarders. Transportation is, is a huge part of skateboarding. I fully understand the resentment towards the skateboarders who are destroying property. That, that is a huge negative aspect to the local businesses, but I don't think that that is the major problem here on the Boulevard. We're experiencing a lot of traffic of skateboarders that are just traveling to and from school, work, you know, the park, wherever they may go. These kids, they don't have cars or driver's licenses. Bikes can be a lot more expensive than skateboards. It's, it's a fact that it's, it's just a logical form of transportation for these kids. So I just wanted to present that perspective. Also, the, the topic of a skate park is a very valid one. Skateboarding is not going to go away. If, if this ordinance passes, skateboarders are not going to go away. They're going to continue to do what they do. Skateboarders are, are used to being told no, and they'll, they'll still do what they love. A skate park gives them an opportunity to do what they love within the laws. If you, if you guys don't want them loitering on the Boulevard, skating up and down the street, give them, give them somewhere to go. There's countless park, park space that's, that's not being used. If you've ever been to a skate park, it's usually pretty packed from, from open to close. Kids want to do what they love, like I stated. So if you, if you considered providing this, it's going to be a huge relief to those businesses that may have complaints or concerns. If you can tell them, hey, you can't do that here, but go here to do it, there's a much better chance of them doing it than you saying you can't do it at all. Because, you know, like I mentioned, these kids are going to continue to do what they love, which is to skateboard. And I'm 28 years old and I, I still skateboard, and to get a skate park would be huge even for me, so.
You know, I don't, I don't think we have, I haven't talked to the rest of the council, but I, I, usually we think along the same lines on a lot of things. I, I don't see where we would have a major issue of giving somebody the land to build a skate park if it was, if it was a private enterprise that did it. I don't see this, this city, first of all, we don't have the money to do it anyway, but even if we did, I don't know that that is a function of city government that we would want to undertake. I mean, the, the attraction to skateboarding is the danger of it, especially in a skateboarding park. I mean, those kids are incredibly brave kids. I mean, it, it, I, I love to watch them. But from a mayor's perspective and from a liability perspective on behalf of the city, I don't know that it's the most responsible thing for a city council to undertake. Might be, it's just what, what I'm seeing. But if that's something that there clearly may be a need for, then I, I would strongly suggest you get some type of private entity that come to talk to us about them operating one and building it. Because right now, I don't see the city building anything. Do you?
We have no plans for that, and I agree with you.
I mean, they, they, the state has totally eviscerated our, our budget. But to, to think that we're opposed to the concept, we're, we're really not. Am I opposed to it from a fiscal conservative perspective on behalf of the city? Yeah, I am. But you, you see the difference? I mean, I'd love to see one, that private enterprise was operating, and we could probably even figure out a way to give them park space to do it. But it's not something we're going to operate.
That would be a, a very interesting conversation I, I would, I would love to have as far as the space, because I actually have a, a group of local citizens, young and old, that we've been working towards the goal of having skate, a skate park or multiple skate parks built in the area for not only the benefit of the skateboarders, but the benefit of the city for the reasons I stated, but.
I mean, we can make room for a, for a pitching or a batting cage. We can sure as heck do that.
Yeah, yeah, there's thousands and thousands of square feet of unused park space that...
That is something we should talk about.
And, and on the topic of funding, that isn't something that has to fall 100% on the local government. There, there are plenty of opportunities out there between fundraising and different organizations, which we are, you know, exploring ourselves.
And if we're making the land available, it became a lot cheaper.
What's that?
If we're making the land available, it became a lot cheaper.
Yeah, of course, yep.
All right. Let's keep the dialogue going.
Yeah.
Okay. Tyler Edwards?
Hi, my name is Tyler Edwards. I work at Pharmacy Board Shop as an assistant manager.
I love your shirt.
Thank you. I've just found that skateboarding has been an opportunity for kids to, you know, not have to deal with, you know, getting harassed more or less, but it has been part of it. Being on the Boulevard, it has been a subject because it's, we are a shop there now. Regardless, there has been skateboarders there, but now I feel like that, you know, we are a shop there, it has been more directed because of that. And if there's many bicyclists and also been on the Boulevard, if there's bicycle, a bicycle shop at the Boulevard, there would also be problems directed towards them more, I feel like. So like Nate had said, there's been talks about skateboard parks and there has been no efforts but been towards that, you know, amongst skateboarders, not been directed towards like city members or anything like that. But if you give, you know, an option for kids, you know, to go to rather than giving them no option to rebel, you know, you give someone to counteract an option, there would be more of an opportunity. I mean, you're going to spend $35 or $25 on a ticket, that $25 could be exempted towards a skate park. You know, you're, you're fighting a battle that can't be won on both ends, I feel like.
Excuse me for interrupting, but you know, the, the, the role that you're, you all are taking here is to persuade us, right?
Yeah.
I, I can tell you that the one way to just make me stop thinking is to present it as this is something I have to do or they're going to do something worse. That, that's, you know, that's not how I live my life. I hope that's not how you live your life. I mean, what we're trying to do is figure out a way that everybody can coexist.
True.
But if, if somebody wants to misbehave worse because we, we don't see it your way, go ahead and misbehave. I mean, that's, that's why we have law enforcement. That, that just isn't a good, good technique, is all I'm saying. But I like the idea of the dialogue and figuring out a way that we can all coexist on this. And I think that that's possible, maybe by adjusting the times of the ordinance, maybe by adjusting the side streets of the ordinance. It, it, the, the idea of helmets, I think, is essential, so that's something we have to look at. But just so you know, you can give them more time if you need it. Do you need more time?
I mean, if there's an opportunity to get a skate park in here, I can say that that would probably be the end to the problem on a, on the Boulevard. I mean, you give an aid for someone to be at, you know, there's less of a problem for someone to go out in the areas and, you know, create a problem. That's how I feel, I mean.
Well, I, I don't know that, if that's accurate, because I think that the Boulevard itself is an attractant, that, you know, we all like to be downtown, I like to be down there. You know, otherwise the parks would be adequate. I mean, all it is is a flat surface, the Boulevard, right?
True. And, you know, there's bicyclists, there's people amongst the areas that are a combination to that Boulevard. So if you take away, you know, the necessities of that Boulevard, there's multiple shops, there's skateboard shop, there's restaurants, there's people that like to do many things on the Boulevard. Why would you take away from that?
Well, you know, the other.
And that would create more money for the city and business.
You know, I, I don't.
Amongst just us, but amongst other people being there as business owners.
I don't, I don't like to leave things under, under the table that we're not talking about. I want to talk about everything that's concerning everybody. There's this noise issue. There's also the issue when Channel 7 is out there interviewing skateboarders and they start flashing gang signs, it reflects on the whole city. Now, that was two people that did that, out of 200 people. But the rest of you really didn't police that situation. I mean, you really didn't say, this is unacceptable. You know, there, there, there has to be some responsibility from you as a group to enforce what is just, you know, respect for others with the other skateboarders. And I thought we had that for a while when the pharmacy was down on the other side of the Boulevard, and then it started to wane, and now we find ourselves here. You, you following me?
Yeah, I mean, if, if you go to that area though, where we were and we used to be, there is nobody there, and no longer. There's no business as far as amongst just Levi's and other areas like that, there's not much of room to grow. That's the reason why we are on the Boulevard, the reason why we have the opportunity to have people walk around and do that. You know, there wasn't that opportunity. So I mean, if, you know, you are on the Boulevard and, you know, you take something away that we never even had, then how do we have an opportunity to grow?
Well, I, I think at this point in all of the, I mean, the age group that's out there on skateboards, they've had enough development to know how to behave.
Yeah, exactly, they're.
And when you, and when you see your peer group misbehaving.
That there's lack of skaters that don't always fall in the respect line too, and that unfortunately, you know, it's going to look worse because you're going to take two out of the 200, you know.
Well, what I'm doing tonight is telling the 200 that they've reached the tipping point. You follow me? I'm telling the 200, you better get the rest in line, be, because now we're having to make it a, a, a regulation. And yeah, we're going to make it a regulation, but there is some give and take here that I think we can work with, okay?
Yeah, I think there would be opportunity.
But what I don't want to do is be back here, I mean, we're going to work something out, but I don't want to be back here in two months, doing it again, because the, I mean, it, it's going to require all of us working together and enforcing whatever we come up with together. Because as soon as it's just a deputy problem, then the only way we're capable of dealing with that is to just not have anything. You, you follow me?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Tyler Edwards? That was Tyler, okay. Virginia Stan? That is a hell of a skateboard.
Thank you. All right, I'm neutral, I don't come with a solution. I've worked with teenagers most of my life and have been around tons of skateboarders because teenagers love, those who love to skateboard, it's just a passion with them. They now don't use it for transportation, as you know, but then afterwards it becomes recreation. And they're going to go, they have got a shop, they have a business, it's going to be natural for them to want to go hang out there, just if you put a park in. And so I just wanted to, like I said, I don't want to be knocked down either, I don't think they should be skateboarding down through the farmer's market, that, you know, there needs to be something. But they also, if they're going to be downtown, you're just going to have them come to where the shop is, and they're going to want to skate there, because that's just what they do when they carry them. So I'm glad you're trying to work something out for everybody. And the other thing I just wanted to point out was, I just, I always like to see ironies. And one was the picture in the paper, which showed, I guess, the gentleman that works at the skateboard shop on this, and then as you look down here as far as you can see when the photo was taken, there is no people walking on the Boulevard. The only two people are simply ambling along, and they aren't anywhere near here on that when this was taken. And the other, and the other one, which you have since brought up other points of which I, I didn't understand, but now I'm, I understand a little further that you probably didn't really mean the way it sounded, is that when you said, well, we're not going to build a skate park because it, it, it's just a law enforcement problem, but you've since elucidated, and, and I, I didn't really know what you meant by that.
It is a law enforcement.
So I, I, on that, so that, on that. So you've brought up some points about what the law enforcement is. And I just wanted to say that it's been a problem for a long time, and I've seen the kids talk about it, and I'm glad that maybe somehow the city is going to come together and make this a, a positive thing, working with the kids, and I'm really happy to see that.
Thank you. You know, just so you're all clear, why it's a law enforcement problem is because you all run into each other in a skateboard park. And when you run into each other, two or three times a week, somebody gets mad. And when somebody gets mad, it's a fight, then the cops have to come, and it, that's what I mean by a law enforcement problem. But if it was managed by a private entity with, with supervision there, we wouldn't have those problems. It, you know, that's all I meant. You also have kids getting broken arms and broken legs, but I, they're going to do that no matter what, I guess. At least we always did. Did you? I did.
I did too.
Okay. Stephen Blum, Blue?
Yes, it was Stephen Blum. It's my understanding that the ordinance came about because there was been some complaints and an injury on the Boulevard. And I would be curious to know, see, I'm not a roller, I'm not a skateboarder, I'm a roller skater. And I'd be curious to know if there's ever been a complaint or an injury to a pedestrian from a roller skater as opposed to a skateboarder.
I'm, I'm not aware of an injury motivating this. What I am aware of is that one of the big issues was the noise from the artist's lofts, and the pharmacy is right underneath the, the artist's loft, so, you know, that, that's an issue.
I think the, the roller skaters and the scooters are getting lumped in with the skateboarders who aren't causing any issues at all. I take my roller skates to all the Lancaster Boulevard events, to celebrate the downtown, the concert series, the farmer's markets, the parades, the, the, the go-kart races, and there's never been an issue of any kind. And I've been skating for a long time. I'm a speed skater, I've been clocked at over 35 miles an hour, but I would never do that in a crowded place. These events that you hold, you have security. If they see somebody doing something unsafe or inappropriate, they should be ticketed and asked to leave. I think that would be a better idea than, than a ban, where you ban everybody, especially the roller skaters, who doesn't seem to be causing any issues at all.
Okay.
All right?
I got it. Thank you. Piper Coolidge?
How are you?
I'm fine tonight, thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your service to our community. My name is Piper Coolidge, I am a filmmaker. I am also the woman who lives on top of Pharmacy Board Shop, directly on top of it. Needless to say, it has been a very interesting experience for me. As a former teenager from 1987, I dated skateboarders, I always felt akin to them. And so I thought, when they first moved in, well, it's going to take a special woman to live on top of a skateboard shop. I don't know if I'm her. Sorry. Public speaking is not necessarily my forte, I'm a filmmaker. As we've transitioned through these last few months with Pharmacy in our building, directly underneath me, I have gone through a number of emotions. First, I felt somewhat betrayed and used because we were asked to come to this community as artists. And I left a number of things behind in order to come here. I felt welcomed here initially when we had the gallery and when we felt supported. When Pharmacy came in, I understood that it was a primarily economical issue. However, I didn't understand why it had to be in that space. I understand there are a number of vacant properties on the Boulevard that might be more suitable for their business. As we've progressed through time, and I've had the skateboarders living outside my window, I've had them throwing rocks at my sliding glass door, I've had my six, now seven-year-old daughter ask me what the words F-ing-N-I-G-G-E-R means because she heard it from them, I have come to feel a little ambivalent about that choice. And unsupported artistically as well. I don't know if any of you are aware, but my last film went to Cannes International Film Festival. We've been chosen to play at HBO New York Latino Film Festival this August. We've also won the Los Angeles Downtown Independent Film Festival Best Los Angeles Film. The entire pre-production process for this was held in my loft. I've done two videos for David Lynch. I've secured funding via a trailer at my loft, and I understand.
No, no, no.
Oh, okay, I just, I, I don't feel that it's a good mesh. I could never have captured the sound. We wouldn't have had the availability if the situation that we previously had where we had the gallery was the same as it was now. We couldn't have done the things that we've done. I like Lancaster, I think it's a great town, I think people have a great spirit and a great heart. I think that it's a community that has a, a good intention, but I think that our way has been lost. I feel very concretely that these kids need a place to go. I understand that there are liabilities involved with the skate park. I also went and toured the skate park that they have in Rosamund. And I know that there's a possibility that wherever their, the Pharmacy Board Shop goes, these kids are going to, they're going to follow. So my proposal is that maybe there's some sort of consideration, that we could put them in a place where they could have control of their environment, the kids would have a place to be, and that the artists who were invited here would once, once again feel embraced by the community, because I kind of feel like, we're here, we don't really know you. You know, I'd like to have more of, of a relationship with the city, and I think we all feel that way. So I thank you for your time and your consideration in this matter, so.
You know, you, you've given us two things to work with.
Yes, sir.
And, and, you know, the, the idea of the Boulevard being for artists is very much by intent, and I think it's the intent of this council.
I feel that.
And if, if that's being somehow, um, you know what I mean.
Compromised.
Compromised, that's right.
Street fighter.
I should have finished high school. In any event, I, I want to deal with that. I also am a little concerned that you're not feeling supported by, by the city, because I, I mean, all you have to do is ask. If it's doable, we'll do it. It is.
Would you a film festival?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yes.
The, let's schedule that meeting within the next two weeks, and let's make that happen, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And, and we might have to talk to the pharmacy about working something else out if it is creating a situation where I'm losing artists, because I, I, I can't have that. I mean, this whole, we got a hundred million dollar investment into making this the art center of the, the North County. That might mean we have to help the pharmacy in, in some aspect, because I don't want to lose you guys. I mean, I, I've purchased stuff from you, I like your store, I like, I like the whole ambiance of what you're doing, but if we have inconsistent uses here, let's, let's take that bull by the horns and deal with it. Am I making myself clear to both the pharmacy folks and to the, the staff? What, what I don't want to do is lose anything here. I want, want us to figure out a way that we all win from this. But the priority of that area is the artists. Make no mistake about that.
Thank you.
That is a hundred million dollar investment, and, and we are not going to risk it. So let's all get to work and figure out how we're going to fix this, all right?
Well, I have a international multimillion dollar co-prediction with the, the French Foreign Film Commission, so if we have a film commission that we could introduce them to, this is why I say.
Okay, well, let's, let's meet on that in the next two weeks and, and go full steam on that.
I've, I've been.
And let's stay focused on the skate.
...the skateboards, so, which, like I say, it's not fair, they, they're children and they need a place to go.
Except, you know, there is an artistic aspect to the skateboarding.
Absolutely.
And, and I mean, the skate, the skateboards themselves are pretty artistic creations half the time.
I was a skater before, so.
Okay.
I'm with you on that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
This is just going to take some attention from, from a, a bunch of us to figure it out, all right?
Okay, well, if, if I can be of any help in any way, I would like to be a part of that.
Yeah, you're definitely going to be.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You don't get to just throw it to us, okay? Okay. Stacy Spiegel?
Hello, my name is Stacy Spiegel. I'm a local musician and artist and member of the Downtown Artist Loft Community since November 2009. I'm committed to service in my community and play shows three times a week for the developmentally disabled at the Daystar program, as well as twice a month for seniors at local convalescent homes and free farmer's market shows throughout the year. I feel the step to make skateboarding illegal in the downtown area while Admiral Bull does not address the real issue, which is the inappropriateness of locating the Pharmacy Board Shop right in the middle of a residential and pedestrian area. The atmosphere of the downtown area around the Board Shop, as well as our personal living and working space at the Artist Lofts, has been seriously altered by the presence of Pharmacy Board Shop, their customers, and guests. Our elevator has been vandalized on more than two occasions, and many of us tenants have felt intimidated by the large masses. Pharmacy Board Shop employees claim to have no influence over the masses, but have been observed skating in tenant areas with customers and guests. They have encouraged their customers and guests to skate in the driveway adjacent to our living and working space by participating with them regularly and providing a skate rail for them to play on on at least two occasions. Recently, I played at the farmer's market from a spot on the property at the Artist Lofts. I happen to mention this is the Artist Lofts, although the city of Lancaster seems to have forgotten it. This comment was in reference to the fact that our gallery space, which was subsidized with taxpayer money under the condition that it be made available to the artists of the Artist Loft Community, was taken from us and then leased to Pharmacy Board Shop. This was the decision of Scott Erlich of Insight Development. The city took a lot of pride and press coverage in transforming the downtown area into a magnet for artists. The city made no move to stop our gallery from being annexed by Ironwood Management. I also mentioned in my performance a short list of businesses which would not hire me, including Beck's Bar and Grill, Port Avino Wine Bar and Bistro, and the city of Lancaster. It is true that I have submitted two publicity packages to the city, one to Parks and Recreation Department and one directly to Teresa Yvonne at the Lancaster Performing Arts Center, also responsible for the Poppy Festival. I said jokingly, maybe I don't know the right person. Within moments, I was approached by a representative of the city and was told another representative from the city was on his way down to talk to me. He never arrived. The first representative, whose name I don't remember, she is a regular at downtown city events, including the farmer's market, told me that it was not in everybody's interest to say things about the city which could be taken as derogatory. I think it is interesting that the city refuses to respond to the security and comfort issues brought about by the inappropriate placement of Pharmacy Board Shop, but responded immediately when its reputation was threatened. I spoke today to Assistant City Planner Jason Cottle, and he assured me that the city is, quote, "doing the responsible thing," unquote, in passing the ordinance. He told me the city's responsibility ended there.
I think he's right. We cannot tell people how to lease their property. We can get involved in, in trying to reach compromises and having discussions with them, but, you know, as much as I'm accused of running this city as something other than a democracy, it is still a democracy. And we, if they comply with the zoning laws, we, we have no power to tell them, to tell Scott Erlich who to lease his businesses to. Do I like the idea that, that anything other than a gallery is there? I don't. I, I thought that was very clear to all of the people who rented, uh, space there to live, that they would have that gallery. Am I happy about it? I'm not. But am I powerless to do anything about it? Yeah, I really am. Now, if there's a situation arising where the, the, you know, people's ability to sleep and live unbothered by, by noise that's unnecessary, yeah, we can do something about that. But I'm hoping that by the time we're done with this process, we have something where everybody feels like they came away winning. But it's going to be a process.
All right, thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and it's okay if you say bad things about the city, they do it every day. Sorry. Angela Davis? Angela Davis?
Hello, how are you? Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, you wanna pull it down a little bit?
Hello, I am a citizen of this community. I have been for about fifteen years. And I'm a filmmaker as well. So if you have a film commission or if you'd like to start a filmmaking program, I would definitely very much be interested in that. But what I am here today is about this particular ordinance that you are trying to pass, or I think you've already made up your mind, to pass it. And I have a problem with just the aspect of you creating an ordinance that would tell people where they can go and where they cannot go. It gets a little tricky. And you can open up a Pandora's Box to a lot of other things once you start to create bylaws to bylaws to bylaws to laws. Now, if you have a business community, a business district, um, that complements with housing, those anticipated problems should have already been anticipated. Noise, traffic, parking, all those things come with the territory of being a business owner. But I refuse to believe that pharmacy is the bad guy here. These people are in the business of making money. And when you tell their skateboarders, or their consumers, one of which happens to be my son, where they can and cannot go. When you have built, spent 2.5 million, as you see in the newspaper, but you did not wanna build a skate park, you said the population was small. Okay, fine, good. The population is no longer small. So the, the answer is to create an ordinance, then have a public meeting, and then say, well, we can talk about it? I don't think that's the proper way to have gone about it. You can speak with this lady and make an appointment in two weeks about a film commission, but have you ever sat down prior to today and had a conversation with pharmacy about some of the things that you can do to build a skate park? Of course, a skate park will be built by nonprofit or outdoor monies, of course. But I do not want to hear about what we don't have money to do when you built a Bellevard for 10.5 million dollars. You had the money, but you didn't use it. Now, let me finish, okay, because my comments are rhetorical statements and questions as well. What I'm saying to you is that you're putting the, the, the wheel before the horse before the cart. You're going about it the wrong way. And when you create an ordinance without communicating to your community, then what you create is animosity, and what you get is anger. And that is what you're, that's what you're feeling a little bit here today. I've lived in this community for quite some time. My son goes and plays everywhere. But like the gentleman said, he wants to ride his skateboard to high school. And he's going to go along those areas by which you're going to ordinate, he cannot go down. So what am I supposed to do as a taxpaying citizen in this community that my son cannot free to be free where he wants to be? That is not fair to him. And what I am concerned about is, once we create ordinances that say, well, you can't skateboard here, you can't ride there, then you're gonna create ordinances that say, well, you can't spit here, you can't sit there, you can't be here. You opened up Pandora's Box up, and we don't wanna violate anyone's civil rights or even their human rights to be free anytime you want to be. You understand what I'm saying to you? Now furthermore.
I do, but I just disagree with you, and your time is up, okay? So now we get to have a dialogue if you wanna continue to talk with me, okay? Because your time's up.
I know, but her time was up too. You let her keep talking.
And, and she had a dialogue with you.
And I'm giving, I got an opinion. This is an open space. We, and I cannot express myself.
So do you wanna have a discussion with me, or do you wanna just?
I'm expressing my opinions. And my, my second opinion is this, that if we create ordinances such as this, and we have fines of 25, 50, and a hundred dollars, if this 25 dollar fine is not paid by a parent, because most of these children don't have jobs, then who, is that going to turn into a warrant for an arrest? Will that turn into a, a bench warrant? Will that turn into a fine or misdemeanor? What would be the protocol if that 25 dollars is not paid? And since you're dealing with a group of kids who may come from lower economic neighborhoods, how come the fee has to continuously go up after the second and third ordinance? What about just keeping it at 25 dollars? And then if you get to where it becomes much more of a problem, then it turns into a felony or a misdemeanor?
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Why don't we figure out something so that nobody has to get fined at all?
You're the one creating the ordinance.
Wait a minute. We have an ordinance up for us to talk about.
Oh, is that what you're doing?
And I really, I really resent you coming up here and telling me that we're shoving this down your throat. And that's essentially what you're telling me.
Yeah, that's what you do.
When we've, when we've opened it up, we wanna hear what you have to say, and we wanna work something out that's a compromise with everyone, all right? That's what we're attempting to do. Nobody's pre-decided this ordinance.
Well, well, I think, but, but if that's the case, then how could we didn't do that before?
Listen, you can think all you want, but I do not waste my time.
I don't waste my time?
And I wouldn't be wasting my time by having this discussion with everyone if I had already made up my mind.
But I think you've made up your mind.
Okay, fine, we're done. We're done, thank you. Your time is up, thank you. We are done. We are done. Sit down.
We, as community people.
Okay.
As community people here, we will pull off an economic boycott along farmer's market and the entire Lancaster Boulevard. Okay, I, I got you. You understand what I'm saying? That's what's gonna happen.
Okay, I wanna be clear with everyone. If you wanna have a discussion to work this out. Remember what you got here. You've got five people voting on this. If you want to make this a, a, a spectacle for your own amusement, go ahead and do that. But every person that gets up and does that, it seals us off. Because we're thinking you don't really wanna discuss it with us. Now, I'm gonna call the rest of your names. You can decide how you wanna behave. But she did not help you. Make, make that very clear. I wanna make that very clear. If your goal is to work out a way that the skateboarders can stay on Lancaster Boulevard, that is not the way to do it. Muric Chenwith? Chenwith, C-H-E-N-O-W-E-T-H. Hey, come on down.
Chenwith, where did that come from?
I am happy to see you.
I'm Mariah. It's Mariah Chenwith. Whoever said it.
Ch- Chenwith?
Chenwith.
Where's that from?
Either England or Scotland or Ireland or.
Chenwith.
Chenwith.
Very nice.
I am a business owner on the Boulevard. We have had a previous skateboard shop actually come onto the Boulevard and actually be right next to us. So I understand the thing about the noise, and I understand about, like, rocks and debris and people getting in your way and customers being unhappy and like, so I'm used to, like, hearing things about, you know, the skateboarders. It's always been about the skateboarders, but it's a different subject. Like, I understand where it comes, where everybody comes down because of the noise. Because they do get loud, they do get rowdy. Everyone should be at a, like, a respect level, like, we're outside. This is, it's a, it's a community, you know, like, this isn't your house. You wouldn't say certain things to your mom to her face, so why do you say it outside? Like, that might be one of the, one of the problems. But also, I am, I'm a roller skater. I play, I play roller derby. Like, I'm on skates, so this ordinance also hurts me. Because I get to my job by my skates. And I need to go down the Boulevard because not all the sidewalks are easy for me to actually skate on, even with my outdoor wheels. So like, I do get that you don't want people sitting on the Boulevard, and you don't want, you know, the skateboarders. But it's, it just doesn't affect the skateboarders, like, it, it affects myself and also my derby team. Like, I remember you guys said that there's still American Heroes Park. We can't skate at the park. There's a sign that says, there's no skateboarding, roller skating, or bicycling. So where are we supposed to go? When half of the sidewalks are already trashed? Like, I've eaten it so many times because the sidewalks are junk. Like, so I'm, I'm not 100% for it, I'm not 100% against it. I wanna meet somewhere in the middle because I'm on both sides of this. Like, 'cause I understand noise, but then again, I understand where you have a business, this is where everyone's going to migrate. I mean, we have nerves to migrate to my store, because that's what I, that's what I do. But, like, we need to figure out, like, something. I'm just not sure what it is.
Neither am I. But we'll get there. Why did we, why did we include skaters with the skateboards?
Because of complaints that we had gotten, but we put it before you. You could certainly exclude it. It excludes, it includes skateboarders, skaters, and razor scooters.
The razor scooters too? Okay, it's easier. We'll get there. Thank you. Patrick Ryan?
Mr. Mayor?
Hi.
Members of the council? Mr. Mayor, thank you for buying one of my pieces. Support, I appreciate it. I'm gonna be proud to include you on my next resume. I'm a resident at the Artist Lofts. And I had the Artist Lofts open for one full month with my show and two other shows last year.
Which piece did you do?
Into the Purple Valley is the one you bought.
Okay.
We first met in the Artist Lofts Gallery. Amanda Johnson introduced us. You were looking at some of my other work at that time. So, the, I lost my train of thought, I'm sorry.
It goes with my ADD, it doesn't matter.
I'd like to talk about the, the gallery itself and the significance of the gallery, of a gallery, to artists. Especially the significance of a nonprofit gallery to an artist, which is a really special, special area. Because it's the, it's the kind of gallery where we can try out anything. It doesn't have to meet a specific commercial criteria, all right? In fact, it doesn't even necessarily need to please people. We're trying to see if it'll speak to people. And in a collaborative situation like this, our gallery is actually a work of art in progress. Okay? Now, I moved from San Diego. I had a gallery for ten years in San Diego, my own gallery. And I lost that, that, well, that whole building to a condos. And, but, so I came to Lancaster for the gallery, because of, the gallery was part of our rent, all right? And it, it was an informed expectation of what having a gallery would be like, okay? And when I had my show last year, here's my Lancaster business license that I had posted in the gallery, my California seller's permit, all right? I bought a wide-format printer specifically to print work for that gallery after I moved here. Okay? This was always, always part of the deal. There was never any question that the gallery was not part of our rent, period. And this is.
Go ahead, go ahead.
But this is as if Ironwood dispatched crews into each of our studios to board off one of our rooms, okay? This isn't an amenity. This is a key feature. Now, the, there is an extraordinary lease violation of our leases, of every one of our 21 leases, that is enabling Ironwood to even have this. And what, what you have right now is not the pharmacy board shop in that store, the pharmacy board shop store. You have the pharmacy board shop business in the Artist Lofts Gallery. They're occupying our space. And I won't go any further into the lease aspects of it, but, but that's, that's what you have here. And I think that, you know, all the, all the hours that I spend in the gallery, skateboarding was just never an issue. I mean, it was that sound and the experience, it was never an issue. And, you know, occasionally skateboarders would go by. We're talking about pharmacy, board shop, customers, guests, and associates. Please be very clear on that. That's, that's what this meeting is about. Thanks so much.
Why, why am I hearing about this after they moved in? I mean, I, I don't understand that.
I can tell you.
I don't want you to tell me. We need to talk about that later, all right? I mean, it, I, I think he's right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thanks for listening. Appreciate it.
We're gonna work this out.
Okay.
All right. Susan Moses?
Mr. Mayor and Council? Pepper, Piper and Patrick have pretty much kind of brought this issue to the attention. I think they, they've raised it, which is the conflict between the Artist Lofts and the gallery space and the fact that it was occupied by this commercial business, you know, the pharmacy board shop. And I know that you said, well, you, this is really, doesn't really fall under your purview or the city's purview to do anything about it. But I think we would say maybe not so much. That may not be quite the case. Because in fact, when the Lofts received its 2010 AIA HUD Secretary's Category Two Award, Creating Community Connection Award, the building was acknowledged as having 21 live-work Loft Apartments for artists, a nonprofit gallery, an outdoor exhibit gathering space, and that the nonprofit gallery would be curated by the tenants as an outlet to show and sell their artwork. And furthermore, on HUD's website, which was partially responsible for providing some of the support to get that building up and running, Scott Erlich has quoted as saying, he points out that because the rents are cheap, artists are often the first to initiate urban infill in a blighted neighborhood. Over time, restaurants and other cultural activity, new residents follow suit with their own infill development. But as the neighborhood gentrifies and rents rise, artists, whom he calls emerging pioneers, are often forced out. Arbor Lofts will make it possible for artists to remain in the downtown Lancaster area, according to Erlich, as the neighborhood develops around them, and at the same time, their very presence will help spur downtown revival. Well, this, he also, Scott Erlich also received some tax credits from the city and some other considerations from the city. So I think the city really kind of has some responsibility there to assure that he lives up to the promises that he not only made to the city, but the, the promises that he also made to HUD, and the promise that he also made when he received this award. And most importantly, the promises that he made to us to attract us, to take our lives from all the other places around the country that we came to and relocate here in support of the dream, because we honestly believed it. We really believed that the city was here and going to develop around the arts, and that that gallery was going to be a space for us to be able to do the things we've already talked about this evening. And we really appreciate the fact that you've taken the time to hear us, and we definitely hope that we have an opportunity to continue the dialogue. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Isaac Raheda?
Hello. I'd like to say a few things about what I've seen on the Boulevard. I work on the Boulevard, and I walk in down, up and all, up and down it quite often. I was enjoying the farmer's market, went to get a cheeseburger at R E P, or R I P. And I saw, I noticed, me and my best friend noticed that, uh, there's a bunch of skaters, or skateboarders just skating down, I believe it's Elm, the one adjacent to, uh, Pharmacy Market, yeah. And I thought to myself, wow, kids getting outside and playing, that's something, you know, I haven't seen in a long time. I really, I looked at it and was like, oh, that's kinda cool. Wow, that's really cool. The city's cool with this? They're not bugging them at all? Then the park rangers aren't, you know, harassing them or anything? I thought, honestly, that, that was a good, good thing. I hear right now a lot, I speak, of talk of the farmer's market and collisions within that high-traffic area. And it seems to me that the restrictions that are currently here are a little, a little high. Kettering, Milling, and then all the way down to Jackman is a huge area. They don't, and, and I'm assuming that what, what is written in the paper is that even the MetroLink will be included in this whole thing. So no one will be able to travel on skateboard in any, in, uh, that huge area. And I think that's very, very restrictive. It seems that the farmer's market is where the high traffic is. Because in the mornings, kids can skate up and down the street, no problem, probably even in the afternoons. Probably only Thursdays from, um, 2:00 to 8:00, is that, I'm assuming that's when it goes. I think that is where the restrictions should be pulled down, if there's any restriction. Other than that, I would like for kids to have a cool street during the farmer's market to maybe chill. Because, I mean, people like to, you know, communion. People love communion. They wanna be around each other. Skaters wanna be around skaters, and they wanna be around the whole crowd too, and enjoy the concert series that's happening in front of Beck's. Or enjoy the, the hummus, 'cause I love hummus down the street. You know, all those, all those things that does attract, you know? It's just, it's just making it, with all these restrictions, it makes it seem like you have to be this cookie cutter person in order to be around these, in these blocks. Or, 'cause if you stand out, then people are gonna notice you and then have a complaint about it. And I like that. I liked what I've seen here today. A lot of people want to talk, and I think that we should. Thank you.
Thank you. Joseph Yor?
My name is Joseph Yor, Palmdale. Monday, if you can look at my card, you see a lot of shaking going on. Monday I was at the VA office, I'm a Korean War veteran, and I'm trying to figure out what the nerve system is going haywire in my neck and my arms. Meantime, I come out of the VA office, and you got a great mall here. I like it. But you're breaking environmental law. You got all these cars parked in the middle there, and there's a car, and I'm coming out of the VA office, and your cars, cars there, and smoke all over the place. And I'm saying, geez, what's going on here? This is the city of Lancaster. Now, I came here really for the skateboard. The skateboard is a great art, a great sport, and a great entertainment. If you're looking back at the skateboard, you'll never see an R for registration, you'll never see a T for trademark, you'll never see a C for copyright. 1960, I was at 7120 Hollywood Boulevard. When we were children, in the 40s, we took a soapbox, put a handle on it, put a board, and we had these iron skates underneath it and they could go down the street. That was a soapbox. 1960, I was at 7120 Hollywood Boulevard, and a rich little old lady who I knew said, will you take care of my son? He had just graduated from Beverly Hills High School. She knew I was an ex-marine, and I said, sure. She was willing to pay the rent, and it was hard times. I saw a guy going, young kid going down the street in a soapbox. 1960, I invented the skateboard. I invented the skateboard. Bobby Schwartz family had the toy company in Las Vegas, Nevada. I didn't know copyright, I didn't know registration, I didn't know trademark. I can't understand, I never seen anybody harmed, getting harmed with a skateboard. I never seen any, but I have seen people get hit with a bicycle. I've had, I've been in a car wreck, I've seen people get hurt in a car. The skateboard is a great entertainment. I don't think you should put this law out. I really don't. Every, every, you have your own agenda, you have these little cars circling around, people do what they want to do, you have the bicycle, you have people on skates. Skateboard is a great entertainment, don't change the law. Thank you kindly. Oh, by the way, I worked with the Great Entertainment, and we had 23 books on a market-covered entertainment law, and that was before the laws were, and I'm sure he'd be up here today if he was alive.
Diane Moskowitz, you were late. That's so unlike you.
I felt it coming on. I am so old that when I see the sign for the pharmacy, I've thought it was a pharmacy. And I had no idea that I was coming to a pissy fight between the artists and the boarders, caterers, whatever they are, I'm sorry. I can tell you, as a citizen, this is, to me, nothing more than a public service situation, a safety situation. Few things make me as crazy as getting out of my car and having a skateboarder whiz by me, no idea where he's going, and I have to jump for my life. Usually it's right beside the sign that says, "No skateboarding." So I'm asking, I, I think where pedestrians are, skateboarders or anything else with wheels shouldn't be. And if you're going to pass the ordinance, don't put up the sign and then have people just boarding by it, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Going home now, I've got enough.
Michael Reeves?
Mayor Paris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I'm a former skateboarder. I, I took up the sport in my native town of Long Beach. Right. And when I moved down below in Los Angeles, I continued it. However, tonight, I'm supporting ordinance for the Boulevard because I had the unfortunate incident of coming out by the library on one of the side streets, and you know how you play musical chairs, trying to get across the Boulevard these days? And I looked to my right, and I looked to my left, and I got ready to go forward, to go across the Boulevard, and by the grace of God, I looked to my right again, and two skateboarders went right across. And after that, I thought, because we have a unmarked Boulevard, we don't have lights, this is a very dangerous situation, and my fellow skateboarders should not be allowed in this area. But what do we do? Skateboarders have rights too. I can remember skateboarding where people would turn on the sprinklers and, and water their yards to try to prevent us from skateboarding. So I looked around town for maybe a place that we could have an immediate skateboard place, and I'm not trying to be smart, Mayor Paris, but I passed by your office over there by Wencall. And I noticed that you have a ramp that goes down for the old loading dock, and you're trying to lease that part of the property. And that, and easily, easily, that could be, with a little cement, that could become a skateboard park. No, I'm serious. I mean, I, I would be willing...
That's why it's funny.
To go out and help raise money.
Because it's serious.
So we could lease that property for the skateboarders. It's something to think about.
I'll, I'll talk to my wife about it, but, but I, I want you to know something, she carries a gun. Okay, that's, that's everybody. Everybody talked I wanted to talk? Come on down. I'm, I'm breaking all the rules now, but...
Yeah, if you're gonna break the rules, it's late too.
Ruben Sivala, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
Worked out, right?
Hello, my name is Ruben Sivala, and I'm a graphic designer. I have several points to make on this. I noticed that the, the people who live in the Artist Loft are saying that pharmacy's more for business, but I'm a graphic designer. And you walk in there, and what do you see? Art. You know how many, you know how long it takes for a person to come up with this design, those colors, and yet it's still not considered art, but it's considered business? Filmmaking is just the same way as skateboarding, you have to think, you have to be strategic, and you have to know what you're doing. Also, like, it's just like crazy how like pharmacies looked upon as like, oh, the rebellious youth, but in reality, it's just a bunch of kids who want to be free, man. It's 2012, other countries don't even have the rights we got. I'm saying, just like, I'm neutral in this situation because, you know what, if I was a business owner, some kid's board scratched in my window, I want to be having, pulling out a $10,000 check for any replacement window. But also, I wouldn't be satisfied having the sheriff pull up on me while I'm dipping down the Boulevard to go to my girlfriend's house or to the bank and get like a ticket, and I'll be like, and it says, "I'll see you in court two months from now." You know, I'm neutral in this because, you know, I don't like you as somebody who disrespects stuff, because also with the issue with respect, to give respect, you have to earn respect. Also, that's what the business people do. It's not just all about them, like, you know, you see a skateboarder, either way, you have to understand and obey the traffic laws that pedestrians have the right, have the right of road, because skateboarders are considered pedestrians. And Los Angeles, when they had the wild, the wild in the streets by a skateboard company called America, a lot of kids were ticketed because they were considered pedestrians riding on the streets. But, you know, I think that just, I lost my train of thought, but I just think you should build a skate park, because usually, I live on the east side, that's not a pretty place to be, if you read in the newspapers. I don't like skating down Fifth Street East at night by myself, when I can be skating down the Boulevard without a single word in the world, you know? That's the thing, that's also the issue, safety. A lot of people choose the Boulevard because it's the safest street in Lancaster. I'm pretty sure not a lot of people will go down Fifth Street East at night, you know, trying to get home, or trying to go to school, you know, coming back from a game, you know? Other people choose the Boulevard because it's safer. Also, like, you know, some people got to respect, but also, there's also the big issue of safety, you know? I've, several times down this town, I've been jumped, I've been almost, I've been pulled out a gun, you know, but I've never complained, you know? I hear helicopters listening down my house every di, every time when I'm doing some graphics, I don't complain, it's just a part of life. You know? Also, yeah, just the whole art and the business thing, I never, I don't know, that's kind of bothering me a lot, because pharmacy, you go in there, you see little kids staring at a board of walls, like a wa, a wall full of boards. Why? Because they see like a bunch of graphics that inspire them, you know? A lot of kids see like a, a baker board, and like, oh, I would like to ride for that scene.
Thank you, Ruben.
Yeah.
Broke the rules.
She looks too beautiful in that ring up front.
I wasn't going to get up here and talk with people tonight, but I think you've rested long enough.
I've missed you, I mean...
Yeah.
It's been months since you've yelled at me.
Sure you did. Did you ever hear the song Pistol Peckin' Mama Put That Pistol Down? I just, if you don't...
Careful, we're kind of sensitive about that.
Yeah, I know, but you brought it up, so, okay. I would like to suggest, well, number one, I was young once, and it's getting harder and harder to remember when it was. And I thought about coming in tonight, down here on a skateboard.
And you chickened out, didn't you?
Nobody would love me their skateboard, knowing how reckless I am. I think they're dangerous as far as getting and letting them on the street, because once in a while, the board slips out from under, under them, the, the person falls and the skateboard goes flying off to God only knows where. There's a time and place for everything, I think they should have their place, I don't think it should be on the Boulevard, but I think you ought to start when your car race time comes up, you know, when you race around the street. You ought to have a roller skating, I mean, a skateboard thing set up, so these young people can get out there and compete, and in the meantime, they can go with your house and practice.
Now it's my house.
Well, you have a lot more property than the rest of us. Thank you.
I love it.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Do you have one other individual?
Who? All right, this is the last one.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to meet you. I've heard many things about you, and I like you.
Thank you.
Just from the five, hour that I've been here. What I think, I used to live here, I went to high school, Sergio Coben, and what I've been hearing here is entertainment and sports. It all combines together. That's part of the industry of entertainment. The artists, it is all together. So what I think is, the pharmacy, just like you, uh, madam, I thought it was a medical pharmacy, but now I know what it is. I think it should stay, I think there should be a park, and I think you should speak to your wife. Because hasn't anybody heard of the X Games? The X Games? It should even be where the cinema is at. Entertainment, money for the city, a great city that Lancaster is, and that's what I want to make my statement for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Anything?
I think that it, we need to modify the ordinance. I think there needs to be an ordinance, what I am hearing is that there are concerns by the residents, the loft residents, and they are very valid concerns. I don't think that any of us would want skateboarders outside our homes skateboarding at, I don't know what times they're skateboarding. And I am hearing that it affects their ability to concentrate and a host of other concerns. I'm hearing skateboarders need to use the Boulevard to go to school or to travel, they've always been using that route, and that's a safer route, so if there is some way we can amend the ordinance or somehow redraft it, to have restrictions on time and when it can be used, when the kids can use the Boulevard to skateboard and when they can't, I think that's a good compromise for everybody who's concerned.
Thank you.
Yeah?
No, I'm not talking to you.
I just like to raise one point, um, you know, I have a, a son that is a skateboarder, and he's not one of the ones on the Boulevard. So there's a safety aspect that I am concerned about with the traffic on the Boulevard, so I agree with Ms. Zito that we need to maybe perhaps come to some sort of compromise, and this is a great city in which we live in, and I know that we are able to accomplish that based on the comments that we've heard today.
Thank you.
Yes, um, everyone, I think, has been heard of their concerns, it's obvious that there's a lot of skateboarders here that are very passionate about their art, and I truly do agree with you, it is an art. We support that, and it is amazing, as someone had said earlier, to go by the Boulevard and see kids actually outside as opposed to sitting on the couch and playing, what is it, game? I don't even know, I don't show so much time I have to play those video games. But it's amazing to see these kids out there, it truly, truly is. But if I may share a little bit of a story with you as to why safety is a big concern. My, uh, my mother, who was taking a walk one day, and was drinking her water, and as she was drinking her water, skateboarder came by. Unfortunately, it shocked her, and she lost her balance and fell. She's no longer with us from that fall. My father has the blessing to walk the Boulevard every weekend to test all the restaurants. And I don't want that to happen to my father. But I have children too, and they, they love the arts, and I support the arts. I agree with what we were just saying, that if we could redraft the ordinance, I think all of us coming together as a community, we all want the same thing, which is having our kids out there and enjoying, I think somebody quoted, "The Boulevard is the safest street in Lancaster." But we have to have guidelines, and we have to be safe, and we have to respect each other. And I think that's what we all want, and I think we prove that, all of us today, by hearing all of these suggestions, and that's what we wanted, was suggestions. And I think from this, we can grow from it and come up with a compromise that we should all be happy with and feel safe at the same time.
I'm kind of conflicted on both issues. I think that, I'll tell a story too. I was coming out of the museum, and the individual I was coming out with, we got bombed by some skateboarders as they were coming out, and they asked what the city was going to do about this. And I said, I'm, I'm happy, I'm, I'm, I'm real happy that the kids are out doing something and that they're out, they're not behind trash cans, smoking some pot, doing whatever, they're, they're actually out doing something, and it's, it's productive, they're not doing... So I would like to see them have an opportunity to go someplace. However, I think that the majority of the skateboarders that are out there have not respected the rights of other people that are out there and that are owners of the Boulevard. So if we do this and we make arrangements, I do think that you need to police yourself or we'll do it for you, because you have to respect the rights of other individuals that are out there. And again, if you don't do it, we will. So let's...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
You know, I'm, I'm one that believes so strongly in personal liberty, and it seems that government has to come in once in a while when the liberties of two different groups or people seem to cross. And that's what seems to be happening here, you have pedestrians and you have skateboarders. Now, I was just down at Newport Beach on vacation, and they put out that little flag. Now, we were boogieboarding and body surfing, but no more hardboards. And there was a reason for that. There was a reason because...
There was a reason because of personal safety. The hardboards go faster, they can do a lot more damage when they run into people than a body surfer or a boogie board person. We, as a government, restrict personal liberties numerous times when those conflicts occur. You can't smoke in a restaurant. You can't ride your bike on the sidewalk because you might run over somebody. So I think in this case, it is about safety. Now, I've been on the boulevard, I was on there today, and we were going to lunch and a couple skateboarders came down. Now, there's some people who stop and they go around pedestrians, but there's a lot who just abuse it. And unfortunately, there is a safety issue. Now, I do agree with a number of the people, including the mayor, who have said maybe we can change things. What I see is that you cannot take your skateboard, I don't believe, and go down to the Antelope Valley Mall and skateboard up and down inside the mall. It's pedestrian place. We have created this artistic destination that is a pedestrian-friendly place. When you have skateboarders going up and down on the sidewalk, on the boulevard itself, it is not pedestrian-friendly anymore. Now, I don't think that we need to make it as extensive as it has. I think maybe just make the boulevard itself and the arterials, or the connections that go out to the arterials. I don't think we need to make Milling and Jackman and Kettering and all those streets. You know, that could be commuter stuff instead of taking the boulevard. But the people that park on Ehrlich Avenue, on Date Avenue, on Cedar, and then walk to the boulevard, they need to be protected. And so I think the boulevard itself and the connectors that go to the auxiliary streets, but we don't need the outside arterials blocked. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
I would, there's a couple issues I think we need to deal with. I want to deal with the artist loft and Mr. Ehrlich. And I would like a meeting set up with all of the people involved in that issue. And we need to come to some resolution. I'm distressed to hear the artist's point of view on this. And I'm a little distressed that this is the first time I've heard about it. I want to figure out, I kind of like the boards on the boulevard if there weren't so many of them. I mean, you know, it was kind of nice initially and now it's grown to a problem we have to police. I would like one of the boulevard deputies, I would like somebody from the pharmacy, and somebody from the Loths, and maybe a couple other people, and I want to redraft this. And I want to try to actually come to a consensus about a way to make this work for everyone. But before I'll sign off on it, you're going to have helmets. And I'm just not going to see anything that we condone with skateboarders and kids without helmets on the streets. I just, to me, that's just irresponsible not to do that. And if somebody feels that that infringes on their liberty, well, I'm sorry. But I've seen too many brain damaged kids and I'm just not going to be in a situation where that happens on my watch. So let's try to get this done in the next 30 days. Captain, is it okay if we have a boulevard deputy? They're the ones on the ground and they see what's going on. And let's figure out an ordinance that everybody can live with in the next 30 days. Does that work?
Sure. Yeah, we'll have the meeting, I'm sorry.
Also, on farmer market day, don't bring your skateboards. It's just not going to happen. There's just too many people there at farmers markets to coexist with skateboards. And I think we're probably going to be looking at some kind of curfew, so whoever we put together on this group to work this out, start thinking along those lines also. Okay? Can we do that?
We can, we'll set up a meeting within the week and then we should be able to have a draft within 30 days.
And one council member can be on that. We can't have two because if I attend, then we have that Brown Act violation issue. So whoever wants to...
I'll do it.
Okay. Okay.
Can we also invite Nathan and his partners?
Who's Nathan?
Nathan was the former...
Yeah, that's what I meant, somebody from the pharmacy. Is Raheda still here, Isaac? Oh, you had his chance. If somebody has a burning desire to be involved, you know, talk to city staff and they'll see what we can work out. I want it small enough that we can actually get something done, though. Yes, sir?
Just to reiterate, for all you who are worried about a skateboard, the county is doing something about that. We understand that the city, Paulville, Lancaster, don't have the funding. We're three quarters of the way to getting a funding and in a couple weeks, we have a community meeting regarding the skateboard going in Quartz Hill. So I think...
What do you mean, it's Quartz Hill? What, do we chop liver?
City, I can't do yours, city. Give the county authorization.
Is that right? Don't get too tied onto that because, you know, we could be trading property for... Yeah, let's see what we can do. Talk to Mike and see what's going down on that, all right? All right, let's take a break. Okay, let's start. Ms. Zito.
Do we have any speaker cards for the housing authority minutes, Madam Clerk?
Oh, no, I didn't. No, but she can still do the housing authority. Oh, no, she can't. Yeah, I got to do it. Hold on, I got to do this. Ladies and gentlemen, the consent calendar consists of items of routine business for which minimal or no discussion or special presentation is contemplated or required. These items may be acted upon as a whole with one motion, a second, and a single vote. If you desire to speak on an item or items on the consent calendar, you may fill out one speaker card for the consent calendar. You will be given three minutes to address your concerns before the authority or council takes action on the consent calendar. All speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the consent calendar being called. This same rule applies if you wish to speak on other items on the agenda and non-agendaized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. Any items to be removed?
No, sir.
Now, Ms. Zito.
Madam Clerk, any speaker cards for the housing authority minutes?
There are no speaker cards.
Do we have a motion and a second for the adoption of the housing authority regular minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. And the minutes have been adopted. We will now hear the staff report from the housing director, Elizabeth Rue Baker.
There's no speaker cards on that.
Good evening, Chairperson Zito and housing authority members. On January 10, 2012, the city council adopted Resolution Number 12-04, a resolution of the city of Lancaster electing to serve as the successor agency to the Lancaster redevelopment agency. On January 24, 2012, the city council adopted Resolution Number 12-08, assigning the housing functions of the former Lancaster redevelopment agency to the Lancaster Housing Authority. On April 17, 2012, pursuant to AB 26, the Lancaster Successor Agency Oversight Board adopted Resolution OB 04-12, directing the transfer of the housing responsibilities and all rights, powers, duties, and obligations, including housing properties and assets, to the Lancaster Housing Authority as previously approved by the city council on January 24, 2012. On June 27, 2012, the legislature adopted AB 1484 as a budget trailer bill. AB 1484 imposes new procedures and obligations on the city, the Lancaster successor agency, Lancaster successor agency oversight board, and the Lancaster Housing Authority. One such procedure is that the entity assuming the housing functions of the former redevelopment agency shall submit by August 1, 2012, a list of all housing assets that contains an explanation of how the assets meet the criteria specified in AB 1484. The Department of Finance shall prescribe the format for the submission of the list. Attached is the list of housing properties with an explanation of how the assets meet the criteria set forth in AB 1484 for review by the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance produced the form as required by statute last Wednesday evening. Upon receipt of the form, staff began working on compiling the required information and inserting into the information into the form. Please adopt Resolution Number 07-12, a resolution of the Lancaster Housing Authority authorizing staff to submit to the Department of Finance a list of all the housing assets transferred to the Lancaster Authority, which hereby authorizes the executive director or designee to submit to the Department of Finance a list of all housing assets that contains an explanation of how the assets meet the law. The executive director is hereby authorized and directed to take all actions necessary to submit the list of housing assets and all other actions in relation to the submission of the list to the Department of Finance and to meet and confer, if necessary, to objections by the Department of Finance regarding the housing asset transfers. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, so moved that we adopt Resolution Number HA 07-12, authorizing staff to submit to the Department of Finance on format to be developed by the Department of Finance.
Second.
I'll second that.
Let's vote. All right, and that passes. I will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Paris.
Thank you. Okay, consent calendar, we have nothing to be removed, is that right?
Not by staff, no.
Okay.
I would like CC 16 pulled from, are we talking about the authority or the council?
Council. Okay. Seven and four. With the exception of those that have been pulled, is there a motion? Are we going to do the power authority first?
That's PACC 1.
Did I skip over that?
You skipped out of the minutes.
Did I skip the minutes too?
It's on page four.
No, I have the...
On page four, PACC.
I see, okay. You're right. Before we do the consent calendar, we will do the power authority actions. Do you have any speaker cards on that? Sir, you want to waive the staff report?
Yes.
Waive it?
Everybody?
Okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, we pass PACC 1, approve the amendment of the Lancaster Power Authority Master Solar Power Purchase and Sales Agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. Now, moving on. Oh, we have the minutes to the council meeting. Trying to remember, was I here last? I was, okay. Is there a motion approved?
Motion, approve M1.
I second.
Let's vote. One abstention. That's right, you weren't here. Okay, consent calendar. With the exception of the items removed, is there a motion?
A motion that we approve the consent calendar with the exception CC 4, CC 7, 12, 16, and 17.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, let's take them in order.
Hi. As some of you guys know, I'm Tyson Southworth and I own Checkered Flag Plumbing on the corner of L 12 and 12th Street West. I was going to let this go, but I saw it on the calendar and we've been having so much fun with the skateboarders, I thought, why not? When they were putting the sewer in, they broke a water main. And that water main flooded my street right in front of my business, which took me quite a bit of time during the last winter season to get clean. And, you know, they took care of it quickly. I don't think it affected any of the businesses or anything there. We didn't lose our water. But what it did bring was it brought a ton of silt and rocks, I mean, to the point where our gutters are full. I sent two of my guys out front with the trash can and some shovels and all they did after two hours was fill it up so heavy they couldn't move it and then they subsequently had to dump it back out. So I would just ask that if that company could come back and clean the street. I mean, it's what we have to do. I'm a contractor. We mess something up, you know, we have to come back and clean it up. I would really hope that they would be able to clean the street up.
It's the Water District, right?
It's probably a private contractor, but we can certainly defer the acceptance of this until we go out and look at the situation and see if they should go out and do it.
Okay.
I would really appreciate that.
It's up to the council.
Thanks.
Tyson, you don't have a problem with us accepting this as it is?
Oh, no, 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 no. Sorry, it was just related to that, to that.
Okay.
Well, yeah, but was it the sewer or the water?
I don't know if Robert happens to know this one, but if deferring it for two weeks won't matter, it gives us a chance to look at it three weeks.
Okay, good. That's what we'll do.
Okay.
We'll see if we can get them out there.
Okay.
Thanks. If not, can we get, let's fix the street. Okay, good. Patricia Jacobs.
Is that CC 4?
That was CC 4, and now we're on CC 7.
Do we want to vote on CC 4?
No, we're going to delay it. We're going to defer it.
Two weeks.
I don't have a comment so much as a question about this. I think the whole thing is a great idea and putting the speed humps in is a great idea. And we did petitions on our block late last summer to get this put through. Excuse me. And we were told it was going to be passed and everything and I'd like to know, number one, has it been passed? And number two, what the timeline might be for getting it onto my street, which is 17th Street West between Lancaster Boulevard and Avenue I.
There's a school there, isn't there?
Pardon me?
Is there a school on 17?
No, but we have constant accidents, people running over.
By the school.
I've had two trucks hit and just a couple of weeks ago, the guy was going so fast, he lost control and wound up in my yard about one foot away from my newest truck. So I'm just wondering, this has been passed, right? And this just has to do with...
We're doing it now.
It's...
Right, we're doing it now? Have you accepted it now?
And if there is a timeline regarding where I might...
Let me find out. When does 17th Street get done? Don't you love these questions?
Well, tonight...
About 500 feet down, no.
Tonight, if you award it, we will sit down and work with the contractor and work out a schedule. There's actually 22 different neighborhoods that we're putting speed humps and calming devices. So, you know, I'd be happy to get your number and we'll get you a schedule as we get it, working with our contractor.
Appreciate that. The kids were playing on the street the last time when he came flying up in the yard and the driveway, so it's getting worse even than it was, so I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
I assume we're doing the streets with the schools on first?
Well, we're working on streets where the neighbors have petitioned us to do that, where we've had a super majority. where we've got a super majority, where there's obvious problem areas, that's what we're targeting first.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion? CC 7.
Motion to approve CC 7.
Is there a second?
I second.
Let's vote. Nancy Acosta, CC 12.
I live right off, I own a home right off of 25th Street West and Lancaster Boulevard, and when I bought my house in 1996, I was told that the special tax was for landscaping, and that it was lasting about 18 years and then it would be done. Now, I don't know when the 18 years started, but by my calculations, it should be done in a few years, and I was wondering if this is gonna extend my special tax for longer than what I was told when I purchased my home. I'm confused.
Mr. Mayor, we're talking about CC 12, it's a CFD, and it's not a landscaping tax, it's, it was for, my recollection is that was 89-1, that was for some water system improvements. The bonds in connection with that CFD mature, and I believe in 2016, it's either 15 or 16, and so we've got about, what, four more years?
That's what I figured, about four years. But was it for landscaping, or was it for something else?
89-1 was for water system improvements.
The real estate agent didn't really look me in the eyes when she told me that.
They, that's usually a clue.
But, yeah, but I was really motivated to buy, we were living in a one bedroom, and I was sleeping on a mattress and box springs in the living room because my husband was too sick to share the bedroom. So, I bought the house, so...
There's supposed to be a written notification of the details of the CFD, special tax given by any seller of property in that area.
I was a little stressed at the time, so I don't recall if I got a written notice, I'd have to go through all my records, and that would take me a little while, but unfortunately, I read this with not enough time to go through my records.
Okay. Has he answered all your questions about it, though?
My only question was, does it end when they said it would end?
Yeah, it ends in, it's either, I think, well, hang on, I've got the exact dates, I can tell you. 89-1 is final maturity in 2016, so it'll end either, if there's monies, surplus monies, it could end in 2015, would be the last year that the special tax would be levied, could possibly be a little bit earlier than that.
Well, that's about what I figured, just with my rough calculations. That sounds...
It will not go beyond that date.
Excuse me?
Cannot go beyond that date.
And there's no way anybody's gonna creatively...
Not without your vote.
Extend it. Oh, thank you, okay, I like that. Well, that's about when I thought it would end, so that answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll move we approve CC 12.
Second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Uh, CC 17, Michael Reeves, I think he pulled 16.
Mayor Paris, Council, Staff, ladies and gentlemen, I'm speaking tonight about the increases in the fees for animal control services. I'm a former volunteer at the shelter, I was over there six months, and I couldn't take it anymore because they were putting animals down. I'm concerned that in our attempt to save $5,000, we're gonna put the lives of some animals at risk. It says here, although there's some increases to individual service rates, the city would realize the overall savings due to a decrease in shelter housing rates if the number of animals days services remain the same as the eight-month fiscal 2011-12. Does that mean that you're gonna put these animals down? I know there's a certain number of days that the animals are housed before they're up for adoption. My concern is that we're gonna lessen those days and put these animals down before their animals, their owners can find them. And another thing, by increasing the fees, we're gonna make it more difficult for people to come by the shelter and adopt animals. I know they, I had a cat that ran away and the shelter captured him, and I know when I went to pick him up, I had to pay fees, a license, and everything, and I'm wondering if this is gonna make it difficult for people to adopt and get their animals out. Now, third thing, have we considered contracting with the SPCA instead of the county? Would it be cheaper? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve CC 17.
Is there a second?
I second.
It's unanimous. CC 16, Mr. Chris.
Mr. McKeon, can you just tell us what we're doing?
Yeah, under the government code, the city is required to have a records management program and a records retention schedule, which sets forth the life or the term over which the city is required to maintain certain records, and it's based on a need for the records, a need to refer back to the records, and so, based on that retention schedule, which was approved by the City Council in 2000, these records are no longer required for any city business, and it's time to purge the files and get rid of these particular records.
I just wanted it written on the record. Motion to approve CC 16.
Please second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Want to do the skateboard thing over again? I'll never mind. Vote. Congestion Management, PH 1. There are no speaker cards. No speaker cards, you want to wave the reading on PH 1?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to adopt Resolution 12-55.
Second?
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Moving on to the council agenda. You don't like my, come on up, Mr. Reeves, you don't like my appointment to the Vice Mayor?
He wants to wait till our next election, so he might get...
I guess we're talking about... Appointment of Councilman Chris as Vice Mayor. It's my hope that we could postpone this until Councilman Smith is elected to the Assembly and Mayor Paris appoints another person to the council, so that new person could participate in the election of Councilman Chris as Vice Mayor. I wholeheartedly support the choosing of Councilman Chris as Vice Mayor, I think he'll do a great job, he's a great leader, but I would like this to wait until after Councilman Smith's elected to the Assembly, and we have a new member, and then we'll confirm Councilman Chris as Vice Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we actually voting on this? I think I'm just making the nomination, or are we voting tonight?
You had asked that it be, or the council had requested be placed on for a vote?
Okay, good, all right. When Vice Mayor Smith wins the Assembly seat in November, then I would like Mr. Chris to assume the position of Vice Mayor. If Mr. Smith were to lose the Assembly seat, we would expect him to resign his seat in absolute utter disgrace. But I can't foresee that actually happening.
They call us mean for that motion.
That's all part of the motion.
No, all seriousness, I'm nominating Mr. Chris to be the Vice Mayor upon the resignation of Mr. Smith if he gets elected to the Assembly seat. Is there a second?
I second.
I just nominated, and you just vote on it, right?
Oh, we've got a second.
Okay, so, let's vote. I don't vote, you guys vote. I can't, I shouldn't vote if I'm nominating, should I?
Yeah, you can, yeah.
Hey, you made it, Marvin. Okay, we have CA 2. Where are we on that?
You had been discussing with myself and the city attorney the need for an ordinance that holds landlords accountable for the actions of their tenants' pets, in particular vicious and potentially dangerous dogs, and we discussed several options, bringing back to council, going to a commission, and we're prepared to take whatever direction the council would like.
Okay, so right now we're sending it to what, what commission?
We would recommend the Neighborhood Vitalization Commission.
All right, but we'll have it back within 60 days?
Yes.
All right. Feel clear in what I'm doing? Rather than just having the lessy liable, we'll have the landlord liable too, that way they gotta make certain they're inspecting their premises, and if they, any pit bulls on the premises, they're gonna be liable. It's just another tool we're gonna use to get rid of the pit bulls in town.
Just to be clear, there's a state law that prevents us from being breed specific.
It's not a breed.
But, I understand, but it technically, if you're gonna do it as pit bull, it's gonna be breed specific, not as a pit bull being a breed, but English terrier, whatever it is, the...
So, they'll be liable for any vicious dog?
I think we still need, I still, it's for any dog.
Okay.
It's the way it's currently drafted. We need to have some discussion with the commission about whether, you know, and what the risks might be if we did decide to engage in a breed-specific type of an ordinance, and we can talk about that some more.
All right, work on it, see if it's doable. Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a report from Mr. Chris on the AVTA.
We held our 20-year anniversary on June 21st at the Helenix Center, which was very good, Mr. Smith spoke at that. We held a public hearing on Route 786, about 30 people attended, they didn't like the route change because of the construction on the 405, so we eliminated the route change. We have a lot of different procedural stuff, but nothing that needs to be, but we should have some answers or some indictments out within 30 to 60 days.
Anybody we know?
Hopefully not.
Okay, Michael Reeves.
Mayor, Council, Staff, I'm sorry, Councilman Chris was not able to attend your AVTA meeting this week, but I was under the weather, and I wanted to bring up some suggestions. First of all, the 786 route that they were talking about, it used to go through Hollywood and work its way to West LA, and they changed the route to begin in West LA and then work its way to Hollywood, but because of construction on the freeway, they had to go back to the old route, and some of the people I know are spoiled by the change at getting off at West LA, but 786 was a very efficient line, and it served a good territory. The reason I'm speaking tonight is that if you've driven through town, you see these giant AVTA buses practically empty, I've talked about this before, and we just signed a new contract with the teenagers to pay people $20 an hour to drive around in empty buses. I think that the AVTA should consider smaller buses, small shuttle-type buses through town. I mean, this is a complete waste of fuel, money, and everything, to have these big buses all over town, half-empty or empty, it's just ridiculous. It's something we ought to think about, considering also, you know, we're gonna get Kaiser down the street on 10th Street West someday soon, and these people would wanna go to their appointments, and they're not gonna wait out in the cold or sun to take the bus, and they'll need a quick transportation mode. If we wanna be an innovative city and provide efficient transportation, we need to go through the shuttle bus route and get away from these large buses that are empty all the time. Thank you.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, but do we, I mean, I'm curious, do we have a census on the buses?
Yes, some of those buses, it's not quite how Mr. Reeves says it is, some of those buses are packed all the time, and some of the buses are packed part of the time, so some of them, and there's no buses that aren't allowed, I think it's eight per hour, so that's the minimum guideline which we use, but some of those buses are standing room only, so they're not always empty, but I imagine when you see them, that they are empty, or they're not quite full, or they've just got done dropping off, so, I understand what you're saying, but they're not always empty. Some of those, like Route 1, Route 12, Route 11, they're full buses.
Michael, you gotta get up during working hours.
You know, I mean, okay, you have a couple of routes that are full, full, Councilman Chris, but why not have meter lines?
That was my fault, okay. Sorry. Okay. City Manager.
Two things, one, I'm gonna ask Bob Johnson to address, I think, a good plan he has for public service announcements. The only announcement I'd like to make is, one of the things that hasn't got a lot of attention in the state budget is, one of the mandates is the state incredibly suspended portions of the Brown Act for notifications and stuff, under the guise that it's a state Brown, it's a state mandate, so they don't wanna pay for it. We intend to fully continue to follow all of the notifications, transparencies, et cetera.
Wait a minute, why are we doing that? I thought the state actually had a good point. Almost everybody gets the agenda up on the internet. Why are we, why are, I think we ought to follow it, I mean, posting it out there on the wall so that one or two people can come and deface it, I mean, does anybody read it on the wall?
No, we do, we post it on the internet on a Friday. The point is, is that the state's direction is open to considerable interpretation, what they're suspending, what they're not suspending, it's really just easier to do what we do, but we do fully post it on the internet, including all the staff reports, Friday afternoon.
My concern is, is that, you know, if we don't have to put it on the wall, let's quit putting it on the wall, because if we miss it one time, then it becomes an issue. If we just keep it on the internet, what's, I just, I think the state has a point.
Well, okay, I mean, we can talk about it, but I think it's just for convenience sake, 'cause we're not sure what's, what has been restricted and what hasn't, that it really doesn't cost anything to post on the wall, and we never miss it.
Except for that one time, when Mr. LaSalle's contract was being discussed, remember?
That was not a matter of posting the agenda.
Well, we didn't post something, didn't we?
Okay.
Oh, well, let's...
Since this council and this administration have been here, we haven't. I'd like to ask Bob Johnson, with your permission, Captain Johnson, to take the podium and make an announcement.
Does the Sheriff's Department still have that rule, they gotta retire at 50? Let's say hello, happy birthday to the captain.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, I just wanted to take a moment to let you know what we're embarking on from Lancaster Station to address some of the rise in robberies. We've had a significant rise in robberies throughout the city and the unincorporated areas, and in fact, throughout the entire county year-to-date, and the property that's being focused on are electronic items, your cell phone, your iPhones, your iPads, your iPods, increased market of about 18% countywide is, that's what's being focused by robbery suspects, and a lot of that is because we are making that readily available for them. They're seeing it, we're carrying it, we're handing it to them, and so, what I wanna ask the community is to be... And so what I want to ask the community is to be very aware of their surroundings, be aware of what they're doing, and to be very cognizant of the fact that if you are walking around with your iPhone and listening and talking, you're not paying attention to your surroundings. And we've had a couple of arrests recently where suspects have been very upfront with us on why they're focusing on those electronic items. And it's plain and simple, with the economics, the economy the way it is, one of the suspects put it very clearly, there's a 50% chance if he takes your wallet, that there's gonna be money in that wallet. But there's 100% chance he's gonna be able to get money for that electronic device. That's why they're focusing on it. So again, be aware of your surroundings. But we are embarking on a public service campaign. We started yesterday with the newspapers. We'll be doing it on Channel 3 as well as the radio station. So again, you'll hear it much more in detail, not only for the robberies, but property thefts as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you. Happy birthday. Do you think we could get Apple to put an explosive device in the iPhone? Just a thought.
Like the red dye?
Yeah, red dye would be good.
I wasn't thinking red dye.
He was thinking blue, a blue dye.
Yeah, it would certainly turn red. All right. That's just me wishful thinking again. Moving on. City clerk?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. You may find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out clearly and concisely, so that if the council, the city manager, and staff need to get in touch with you, they will have your information. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. When you approach the podium, you'll see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We request that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. Following this procedure will allow for a smooth and timely process for the meeting. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on any items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. South Bonnold Neighborhood Watch. I was thinking it was one person.
Good evening, everybody. We are the proud residents of South Bonnold Street between J. and J. 1 and 13th and 15th Street East. We just wanted to approach you and see what other assistance we can get from the city and law enforcement regarding reducing the foot traffic on our property. It culminates just short of Avenue J, and we have a short fence there that people like to congregate at and create mischief and trouble and everything. We did approach you in October of last year, and you had advised us to meet with deputies as well as form a neighborhood watch. We've done so, and we've had four meetings between now and October. And I'd like to turn it over to Shilly.
Hi. Good evening. We wanted to come back because there's been an increase of foot traffic as well as congregation in our properties. We have a four-foot fence. We did speak to the Public Safety Manager. He had somebody come out within the week after the council meeting, and that was great. We were told that the fence was a responsibility of the property owners. However, since then, we formed the Neighborhood Watch, like Brandon said, and we saw a decrease of foot traffic, mainly, I think, because of the sheriff's car parked right there in front of the reflector sign.
Yeah, that'll do it.
Yeah, so, but in the past three months, we've had increase of foot traffic, especially the last month. And we have had two incidences where we've had to call the police, and we've gotten great responses from our officers, and we thank you for that. But the thing is, is that we have the issue of the people seeing the police coming, and then they jump the fence and cross over Avenue J onto the other side of Bonnold. And we've actually had groups of like 30 people literally sitting in Brandon and I's yards, and he has a fence around his yard. So we just wanna know, yes, we're at the end.
Have we talked to the landowner about putting a fence up? Is he resistant to it if we covered the cost?
Well, I've rented for nine years, and Brandon's a property owner, so we have talked about it.
I mean, is it your fence?
Huh?
Not our fence, it's the city's fence.
We can look.
That goes along Avenue J. We are perpendicular to it, and the cul-de-sac is just short of Avenue J.
If it's this, I'm sorry, if it's the city's fence, yeah, we can certainly do it. I was under the impression that just till now, it's just what you said, which was a private property is the fence that I saw. If it's the city's fence and it's in a landscape maintenance district, we can certainly address it.
We just hadn't gotten that far. You had just advised us to, for you guys to be able to approach us on assistance level. We needed to do our part and form a neighborhood watch and then.
How long of an expanse are we talking about? How long would the fence would be?
Probably a couple of streets, not very long. There are streets that are adjacent to us that have block walls, and there's also streets that have chain link fences that are significantly higher. The fence that we're talking about is maybe waist-high to me, and, you know, everybody could just lean up.
How long is it?
The length of the fence is to my backyard, to Brandon's front yard. It's literally that, you know, we live directly across the street from each houses.
So is it like from where you are to the wall, or both walls?
Maybe like from the wall to the door.
Yeah, thereabouts.
Let's get the wall built, all right? Anyway, we have to do it. We have to use private funding, you know, talk to me. But let's get that wall built in the next 30 days, okay?
We so appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for hearing us.
Thank you.
Sure. Can we put glass? Never mind. I own property there? No, that's on the east side. You're on the east side, right?
It's the east side.
Yes.
I own it on the west side.
Oh.
Okay, good. Okay, 30 days, it should be all better, okay? If it's not, come see me. We'll see what we have to do next, okay? I mean, if we can do it, we're gonna do it in 30 days, but if there's other issues, we'll deal with them. And thank you for doing a Neighborhood Watch.
Absolutely.
That's huge. Good, good. And you got to know each other, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just short of street.
Mr. Paul.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, good evening. I, like you, Mayor, don't like to show up and learn new things, unless they're good things, and that happened to me tonight. I learned something I'm glad, and I want to commend you for getting the cameras fixed for the public access. That's what I was gonna talk about. I was gonna talk about Stephen Covey. He died last week, and he's helped more people than just about anybody develop their personal and professional lives. And strangely, he died of complications of a bike-riding accident, so he had a helmet on and everything, and I don't know if the hospital killed him, but he died, and it's a shame. He was a great contributor. He also had, in addition to his seven habits of highly successful people, his eighth habit, which is to find your voice and help other people find their voice. And that's what the public comments has meant to me for many years, and I'm glad it's back. It helps. I want to commend you also on tonight's meeting. This was the best dialogue between the community over an issue that I've ever seen here. And that's why I come, to see people put their heads together to solve problems. I also got a chance to present to the Criminal Justice Commission the Human Accountability Project the other day, and that was fun. That's one of the seven habits, is to think about the end. And I put that together in an effort to have a sensible system of national traffic enforcement and partially to get the law enforcement out of the job being a bad guy policing people's behavior while they're driving, when we could do that electronically and just debit their account.
I go broke.
I watched some news today about one of the responders, a doctor who was helping people in Aurora, and he also treated people at Cullumbine. And one thing that he pointed out, it was very intelligent questioning by the interviewer, but how does he deal with it? And people that respond to crisis are not immune to the crisis, they have to have a strategy to deal with it. And that's why we forget about the stress that law enforcement is under constantly. This is not a non-issue. We have to make it as good as we can so that the law is respected. And so, that's what that is about, and I'm just glad that the community worked together tonight. It made me feel good, and it made me feel glad to live here, but I always do that anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Nancy Acosta.
I was reading the AV Press lately, and there's a new 24-hour recycling center. I really like it, because when I was cleaning out the garage, I ran into all kinds of interesting things underneath other things. And, you know, waste management doesn't always make it really easy to take care of stuff like that, so I think this is great. Thank you.
Thank you. We are -- any comments from the council? We're going to recess and go into closed session and talk about all the people that are suing us. Okay, want to go back on? Anything? Good. And the $500,000 prize for staying until after the executive session goes to the only person who did. That would be Matt Smith. And the vice mayor will pay him personally.
That's 'cause he wants to go out for tacos, actually.
Moving on, city attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the council met in closed session in the government code section 54956.9C concerning the possibility of initiating litigation, gave direction to attorneys concerning that matter. We also met under government code section 54956.9A on the items listed as number one and three, and four on the agenda, and gave direction concerning each of those matters. No further action was taken.
I did tell you that I would rather cut off my hand than settle this case with T.Cal, didn't I? Yes. Thank you. Okay. Just so there wasn't anything lost in the translation. Okay, you want to adjourn the housing authority?
The housing authority meeting is adjourned until August 14, 2012, at 5:00 p.m.
The city council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, August 14, 2012, at 5:00 p.m. We are adjourning in memory of Mark McQueen, a young man who passed away at the age of 18 due to a vehicle accident. Mr. McQueen was a City of Lancaster employee who was bright, energetic, a go-to guy in our Parks and Recreation and Arts Department, and he will be deeply missed by all of us. Carol, I'm coming home. Don't shoot me.